Okay, the Stratford zoning commission is now open for a public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard in this session. We have four members. Yeah, if you want to sit in in place of Stephanie in case she doesn't show at all. Ms. Manis will sit in at this point temporarily. Oh, never mind, Stephanie is here. Okay, we have a full contingent of regular members here this evening. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued to another date, which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petition to be heard this evening was advertised in the Connecticut Post on October 31st and November 7th. These properties were duly posted on November 5th. Ms. Phillips, would you please read the one and only petition?
105 Century Drive, petition of Century Sales and Equipment seeking an approval of location to establish a used car dealer license in an MA zone. Thank you.
If you were, I don't know if you just want to repeat what you did last month and Jay will read in the letter and we'll go from there.
My name is Thomas Rotz. I'm seeking approval for this dealership at 105 Century Drive. I cleaned everything up, you know, as I was told what needed to be done. I did everything, moved all the containers, everything.
Okay, Mr. Bensky.
And I can confirm, and I handed out a letter to all the commissioners, I had the zoning enforcement officer, per your request, go out and work with the applicant so that we could get everything sorted out for this month, and I'll just read into the record his letter. I have worked with the applicant to address several issues on his property and in the street right-of-way. Namely, he has reorganized his construction yard and also removed a large amount of items so as to provide sufficient parking for his proposed automotive use. He has also removed a large amount of construction items which were stored in the street right-of-way. To this state, he has completed everything that I have requested. John Rozowski, zoning enforcement officer.
Any questions, Mr. Hendrick?
I guess I'd ask, Mr. Bensky, do we usually have standard stipulations that go with these used car lots or?
Yes, we do.
And have you been given those? Are you aware of what they are?
No.
So we don't have them in the applicant's file, but any automotive use, it's essentially no storing of smashed motor vehicles in the front of the property. It's their typical standard conditions of approval that are consistent with what the state of Connecticut also requires as well. So they're not unique to the Stratford.
Oh, okay, yeah, there's not going to be any of that.
So he hasn't received those yet or?
No, typically the applicant would not get those unless the zoning commission has attached those to their approval.
Okay, alright. And I guess so you won't be doing any storage vehicles on the road just within the property?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Want to thank the applicant for being so prompt to clean it up and responsive. And whatever those stipulations are, I'm sure you'll be able to accommodate, correct?
Absolutely.
You hope, you don't even know what they are yet.
Whatever they are, I will take care of them.
Okay, thank you. Anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Motion to close?
So moved.
By Ms. Phillips, second by Mr. Silhavy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Text amendment. Mr. Silhavy, would you like to read that to start it?
Mr. Chairman?
You're all set, yes.
Since we have the one applicant here, would it be okay if we went out of order just to take care of his issues so he could leave and they'll get an answer before he leaves?
I don't see the rest of the meeting taking that much longer.
Excuse me, is there, there's only one item on the public hearing agenda. So would it be proper for us to close the public hearing and then go into the administrative?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick to close, second by Mr. Silhavy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Now into the administrative session part.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take 105 Century Drive off the table.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Silhavy, second by Mr. Hendrick to take 105 Century off the table.
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application of 105 Century Drive. I'll make the motion with the appropriate stipulations.
And I'll second.
Let's talk one at a time now.
Yep.
Motion, second.
Motion by Mr. Silhavy.
Can Mr. Silhavy repeat his motion so we can hear it?
Certainly. I make a motion that we approve 105 Century Drive petition of Century Sales and Equipment with the addition of the standard stipulations that are provided by the Planning and Zoning Office. Second.
Second by Ms. Phillips. Any discussion on the matter? Anybody else have anything to add? Mr. Hendrick?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has done everything that was asked for him in regards to cleaning up the property. So I think in the end he will be a good, good responsible business there and I would thank him for his efforts.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes five zero. Hey, Mr., anybody like to do anything with the text amendment that's been on the table?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take text amendment. That's Stratford Planning Commission to allow for electronic message signs on town-owned property off the table.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Mr. Hendrick?
So I guess just for, to move it in its proper order and allow for discussion, I would make a motion to approve the electronic message signs.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Mr. Hendrick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Silhavy.
Mr. Chairman.
Under discussion, Mr. Hendrick.
So the intent of this, this whole electronic sign was, I think, laudable. Clean up some of the blight within the town. We've had a number of issues with it. Throughout the last couple of months, the town attorneys provided a opinion, a very detailed opinion. And I think it brings up a lot of issues. Freedom of speech, what the town writes and not, what liabilities. There's also issues with who's going to maintain it, is it going to be a responsibility of another town department? So there's a lot of issues that go along with it. So although I think the attempt was well-meaning, I think it just brings up way too many issues and creates too many problems for the town. I think the intent to clean up what would be blight of some of these sandwich signs is something that we should address and perhaps we could do it this evening. But I don't know that this is the way to do it. And based kind of what I'm reading here, in the end, really, the town can only put up town messages without getting into civil rights and a bunch of whole different other things. Because there's a lot of organizations that maybe we don't want to advertise their business just because of the nature of the organization. But we would be forced to because once you open the door, everybody gets a seat at the table. And I don't know that that's appropriate for a town-owned message board to take on. So I can't support it as it is. But I would definitely like to look at maybe changing or strengthening the sandwich board signs in today's day and era between all the different avenues to reach out to people, whether it be through emails or Twitter or whatever they may be. There's a million different ways to reach people, and I think more often than not, people are doing it. A lot of these signs, I noticed a lot of political signs still up, you know, which create a lot of the blight that it is. I know, I saw you, Mr. Ferdet, out the other day pulling signs off. What people typically do is put these signs up in public or town-owned property where there's not an owner to say, "I didn't put it there." Or I've noticed them going up on homes that were, perhaps a senior has moved out and they're vacant homes. But they just feel that they can go and plop the sign down on these people's property and, you know, who's going to say anything? I've even been told, "I don't know how that sign got there. I woke up in the morning, somebody just stuck it there." So I think that should be addressed, but I don't know, I don't think that this is the way to do it, so.
Okay, Mr. Silhavy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've spent a fair amount of time considering this, and I know I spoke somewhat at length in the last few meetings. I'm not going to revisit those points, but I want to, first of all, commend the town planner and members of the planning commission for their work on this. I know they've put a lot of thought into it, and I know in particular, as I've said before, Commissioner Staley always makes it a point of discussing this with me whenever he talks. The, after reading some of the opinions, and I sent an email earlier to the town planner and to you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, to the Planning and Zoning Administrator and to you, Mr. Chairman, wondering if it would be possible for us to refer back to the planning commission for further work, and I'll explain why in a minute. It seems like it's probably more procedurally correct for us to vote and have probably a motion to deny without prejudice in order to allow it to come back in a different form. My reasoning behind this is, is the more I thought about this and read about it, and Mr. Hendrick alluded to it. The town has the ability to be able to communicate through this in times, and it was mentioned in there, weather emergencies, town-sponsored events, and so on. If you were to go down that road, you actually bypass the whole question of private organizations and having to make subjective judgments as to all sorts of different items regarding that. And quite frankly, this came to us as an amendment, but it probably would have merited to have some sort of more of a policy behind it in order to regulate some of those things. So while I'm not opposed to the concept of some type of the electronic signage to enable us to provide public safety messages or, you know, inform people of, again, town-sponsored event, it was when we started drifting into that other area where a lot of my concerns that I addressed in the last few meetings rose. So, and it even got me thinking there, you know, perhaps, you know, if we wanted to make that a venue, you know, something that might want to be explored is could we, you know, come to some sort of, you know, explore some sort of an arrangement with a private entity, sign company, that could do things for a charge, to help out organizations so that we can then go forward and address removing the sandwich board signs, which I know continue to be a problem in there. So I think how we address signage and communication still needs to be addressed. It's not something that I think we were quite ready to go with in this package. So my own preference would be to ask the planning commission and the town planner to explore some other venues and refine this proposal a little bit more. Whatever the parliamentary machinations are to make that happen, you know, I'd be happy to work with you and to make sure that our thoughts are communicated to them effectively. But as it stands right now, as it's presented, I don't think we want to go ahead and pass this as is right now because I don't think it's quite ready for us to refer to the council. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Phillips?
I have also given this quite a bit of thought, and we talked about it quite a bit the last time. Looking at the opinion that was presented, I'd like to see it passed, but with it an amendment. In line with what the decision here, or that's decision, the opinion, thank you, laid out, there's a lot of good in this. And I hate to see us lose the good in search of the perfect. Have it restricted to town functioned as it's written here, I would almost take the words verbatim, if I can read it quickly. Not counting the nonprofits. The town could construct a permanent signage to display governmental messages to share, flood warnings, which we desperately need around town, school delays, traffic congestion, a town event, tax deadlines are always important, even a holiday message. That is strictly restricted to governmental messages. There's a very good need for that, and we have not really been yet, we're getting there, I'm not being negative. But we haven't been successful in reaching all of our population without the star. We have restricted use on the 911, reverse 911. This gives us a way of very quickly, without cost, alerting the public, you know, there's a flood underneath the train station or a flood underneath, and I just did it yesterday, the, under Broad Bridge, it was completely flooded. And if I knew that before I turned down Broad Street, it would have been really nice to know that I couldn't get through and everybody was being diverted. There are things that we can do, or even just to announce some important information that the town has, that a lot of people just don't read in their emails. Not everybody signed up for the emails, not everybody watches the patch. But we do drive through town. And if we restrict and amend that provision that the planning commission, who spent a lot of time talking to folks, it gives the town one more tool of communication. And I think that's a positive. I think for us as a zoning, and I ask our commissioners, my colleagues, to give the town an opportunity to communicate with the residents, another opportunity that is safe without distraction. I'm happy and thrilled that we have a decision. We can eliminate the idea of nonprofits and so forth like that, that can go back, that if they want to pursue that further in lawn signs. But, you know, limiting at least a couple of signs so that the town can at least, the government and the administration or whoever can communicate governmental messages, I think, is very important, even if it's, a meeting is canceled, all right? The town council meeting, we had a, I remember a few years back, there was a bad storm and we canceled the town council meeting. That would have been nice to have that on a governmental message, to be able to get out quickly. And be able to get that information out. So I implore you to consider limiting and amending the digital sign just to governmental messages, just to the needs of the governmental departments. We already do that to some extent now. The Public Works hauls out their street sign. I've seen it for Blues on the Beach in front of a few of the departments. In some ways, that's not in compliance either. This would allow that to be used as well because, you know, sometimes you have unintended consequences. I think these are opportunities and we build on them. So my ask is that we consider amending what has come before us with the stipulation that it is restricted almost to the way it was written by Attorney Sullivan, with the hard work she did. And leave it to that. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak on the matter? Mr. Hendrick?
Part of my concerns is too, one of my concerns, when you have a sign on the side of the road, one of the things they talked about was this sign changing every couple of minutes or whatever it may be. So the vast majority of the people, unless you're, you have, whether it's for a nonprofit, whether it's for a governmental agency, you have a sign that changes fairly often, so unless you happen to catch it at the right time, when that sign is flashing with the information that's pertinent to you, then you're going to miss it. There's also the issue of being distracted reading the sign while you're driving down the road. If it's, you know, got some information about there, about a time, a place, whatever it may be, you're looking at the sign, you're not looking at the road. Creates a traffic hazard. There are other ways the town can reach out. I know a while back we had that phone system. I don't know if that's still intact, the reverse 311, whatever it was. I don't know if that's still in place. But, you know, there's no way, I think the expense of this, you know, who maintains it, which town department controls it, who puts the information up there, how is it disseminated? It's a whole process and an expensive process that I don't feel is very effective. I think there are better ways to do it. So I would just be concerned, public safety, you know, the information not getting out there to, just the very few people who happen to be driving by. I mean, you're not going to sit there for 45 minutes while all the signs change to see what it is. So I just, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the right option, and I'm sure there are better ways, but I don't think this is it.
If I may, just respond. I think the planning commission did quite a bit of research. There we go. Research and working with other departments to control the length of the messages and the timing of such. But if we restrict it to governmental messages, I don't think you're going to see a lot of messages scrolling. If there's a flood, there's a flood. I think that message would be on that sign and it stays on that sign. And that would be the intent so that as many people saw it as possible. If a road is closed, we do with our directional signs right now. Again, the fire department and Public Works rolls out their portable signs now, and they flash. And we haven't restricted that. And that's already, I mean, we would have that out of compliance. These signs don't have to be a distraction. They sit back from the road, they're large enough, they can be fixed. I don't want us to lose the good of this out of our fear that there could be some, you know, negatives because of what might happen of litigation or what might happen. Towns have done this, people have had these governmental signs. Something else that I'd like to consider too, there are many nonprofit groups who would really take an opportunity, I know I belong to a couple, who would love to donate, and these signs are not that expensive. They usually run under a couple of thousand dollars or less. Sometimes the nice ones are about a thousand, fifteen hundred, I've looked them up. And you could get some nonprofits or some groups to be able, just like we have our Rotary sign in the center of town, to be able to just donate that and raise the funds for it. So it does not have to be a governmental expense. The mayor's charity golf tournament might want to fund it. So I think if we have the tools, and that's all we're doing, is providing the tool. It doesn't mean we're going to run out and buy the sign tomorrow. The mayor may decide that we don't need it today or tomorrow. But if it's there in the books, it provides a tool, like any other opportunity, to use it or not use it. By not passing this, we've eliminated a potential public opportunity to save the public. Not cause a public safety, but provide a public safety and provide more communication to our residents, our taxpayers, without difficulty. The telephone system that you're referring to, you have to sign up. And we've already had three administrations who have all expressed frustrations that very few of the public signs up. And the other thing, there's a law against using cell phones on the 911. You cannot put a cellphone in. So therefore, we've already lost a considerable amount of our population who don't use landlines. To me, this is something that I ask you to consider, that's a small step, that would bring such good. And denying it would be in search of the perfect, and yes, there's opportunity to mold it, go back to planning and look at what else we could do. But limiting this to a couple of signs, which is what the planning department has done, commission, they've restricted the use of it. They restricted the lights, losing my voice, lights frequency, all of that can be managed within the programming of the signs. In the case of government, I think you won't find a lot of changing of the signs. I think you'll see road closed, flooding, Blues on the Beach. I don't think you're going to see the signs change a lot.
Okay, I think we've heard enough. We ready to vote on this matter? Okay, I believe the way it was presented, a vote in favor would be a nay, correct, or?
It was a motion approved, like all typical motions, so a vote against would be to deny this moving forward.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Silhavy, or no?
Before you take the vote?
Is there a motion, Mr. Hendrick?
I did make a motion already and it was seconded.
It was seconded. Mr. Chairman, I realize I didn't do something, if I may?
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against, say aye?
Opposed, nay.
Nay. Passes four one.
Fails four one.
Fails four one.
One to four.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, could I present a motion to bring forward?
The matter's closed, Ms. Phillips.
I cannot motion it again?
No.
I wanted to add a stipulation to it. So it's dead?
It's dead.
Okay.
Other work, approval of the minutes from our November 13th, 2019 meeting?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick. Second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Cam site plan review, we have nothing. Zoning enforcement study. For once, I finally have a few complaints. I've received a few complaints in the last month in regards to, Mr. Hendrick had brought it up earlier, in regards to political signs that are still out. Mr. Bensky, I understand the regulation states that they all must be removed five days after the election. I didn't bring a copy of the regulation with me, but I believe we all pretty much understand that. I went out yesterday and actually took pictures of them. And they all happened to be Democratic signs. As the chairman, Ms. Phillips, do you have anything to comment on that, or?
We have sent people out. It's possible that they have been blown or moved. We weren't aware that there were any signs that were still out there. People put them out. If the zoning office wishes to alert us that they have seen some signs, we'd be happy to go and remove them. We weren't aware that there were any signs that were still out there.
You're aware to put them out, but you're not aware to pick them up.
Many volunteers will come in and pick up signs, homeowners. We do not, like most parties, have a list of every location where the signs are. And we are also aware that people move signs or they get blown to another location because of the weather and the storms and so forth. I myself have picked up signs from both parties that I don't think were originally, you know, they're just laying down and I've picked them up. I think it's something that if we're aware of them and the office mentions them, we go pick them up. We're just not aware of them. And people have gone out and made an effort to pick them up wherever. I haven't seen them myself, but not to say that they don't exist.
Well, they, all on main thoroughfares. Mr. Hendrick?
How many signs have you seen?
Total of six.
Six, so it's just?
Six different locations.
Different decent number. But you had said you'd take signs down?
We pick them up if we see them. The volunteers go out and they pick them up where they know that they are. If they see them in their travels, they pick them up. Because some of them get blown. I know there's some parts of town I don't travel through. But I know volunteers have been picking them up when they see them in any public place. They might be, six of them out of how many signs that are purchased? They're probably in districts that we're not as involved with, so I don't know where they're at. So it's very simple. Nobody's complaining. They want to get them picked up. We're very much against blight. We'd like to see them picked up and destroyed, and...
They're not being picked up and they are contributing to the blight in town.
If you're...
They are on main thoroughfares.
I don't know of them, but I've asked people to go and look for them. I don't know of them, but I've asked people to go and look for them. Nobody's resisted it. If there are some that you know about, I think that if you let us know, we'll pick them up.
I'll give Mr. Hibansky the list and Mr. Hendrick?
And again, it's just a review to Ms. Phillips, you had said you'd take down signs from both sides?
If we see that there's signs that are after the election as a courtesy, it used to be the case, that both parties would help each other out by trying to clean up the town and pick up the signs. If that's an imposition to the other side, we'll certainly leave them there.
Well, I just, and again, I...
That's...
Not only that, but I know I had mentioned, you know, changing, when we were talking about the electronic sign, which is changing the sign ordinance, whatever it might be. But I know, like I'd said, you'll see signs that are placed on town-owned property or property that's kind of state property, whatever it might be, but just, and that's in violation of our zoning regulations, our sign regulations. And if we could find a way to enforce that and maybe hold those people accountable while we're at it, you know, the candidates always say, "It wasn't me, it wasn't me, I have no control over my signs." But I know the sign in my yard was picked up the day after the election, but I didn't even have to do it, I was surprised it was gone. But when you see those signs, I don't know if there's any way to hold those people accountable, the candidates, you know, does the candidate just say, you know, like Ms. Phillips says, eh, you know, we have no control over our people and what they do, but you know, maybe it's time we start holding these people accountable and then they'll be a little more diligent about picking up their signs and cleaning up their mess, not placing signs in vacant lots or, you know, town-owned properties or private properties, whatever it may be, state-owned properties, because like you said, that does contribute to the blight. And it's an eyesore and it's kind of, you know, slightly underhanded putting signs where they don't belong because nobody can say anything, because nobody knows who owns the property. So if there's some way when, in the upcoming months, we can look at how to address those, our sign regulations, so we can clean some of that stuff up, so we can hold the candidates accountable or the town parties, whether it be Republican or Democrat, to make sure that they clean up their mess. Businesses as well. I know the one you took down today, I saw your things today or yesterday, it was a yard sale or something along those lines. You know, these people know where they put the signs, you know, go pick them up after the event. I think the one you showed me was a November 15th date. You know, go pick them up, you know, have some accountability. Don't pass it down to the next guy. Your job's busy enough, you don't need to be picking up after, you know, it's like back home, you know, we're not little kids, you gotta pick up after yourself.
I think you mischaracterize what I said. We take it very seriously is what I said. And the candidates, all I said was, you asked the question, don't you know where all your signs are? Some of our volunteers, people who walk in off the street, take signs. We're not always sure what location they are at, but we are very diligent that when we see a sign, we pick them up from all the locations we know about. And we go forward and look for other signs that may have blown to another area, been relocated to another year. I think I brought up once before in the last term that we needed to hold each party accountable for how many signs go out and where they're located. But I think unless something has changed, there was always a courtesy list that went out that said, hey, we see some signs on, I don't know, Wood End Road, can you pick them up? One of us would go out and pick it up.
Now, limit the amount of signs a political party can put up? Is that a freedom of speech violation? Whatever, just, let's move on to something else.
I can make just a suggestion, if there are some locations, you can relay those to me. You know, I have a policy with my staff that they're not allowed to take other people's signs, but I'd be happy to relay those, relay those to Commissioner Phillips or whoever, whoever's the appropriate person. That way we can get the signs picked up. If that works.
We could do that. Okay, under accessory application, apartment applications, we have nothing, sediment erosion control, nothing, planning projections. Other items, Stratford High School, I believe we were, pretty much were all set with that, correct?
That's correct. Now, we put this on the agenda just in case there were some modifications that the zoning commission had to look at, but the item can be stripped from the agenda.
Someone want to strike it or do we just ignore it or?
Move to strike from the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Solhavy, second by Mr. Hendrick. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Oil settings, parking, P O C D, T O D. Mr. Hendrick?
You know what I'm going to ask? How are we doing with the couple?
Oh.
I hate for a month to go by without me asking.
There's been no new, well, I think the last progress that, well, not real progress, but communication that I had with the CIO, you were CC'd, I believe the chairman was as well, that there is an appetite to explore relocating them, but the town has no interest in doing it until the project is complete over at the high school. They didn't want to add another change order to the project. And, you know, potential waivers, maybe a potential hearing, they wanted to get the project complete, up and running, and then continue and reevaluate all their, they're going to reevaluate all their contracts going forward especially, but the relocation is still on the table.
Thank you.
Okay, well, before we entertain the last motion here, I'd like to thank everyone for two wonderful years serving as your chair. It was my pleasure. I think we accomplished a lot of great things. It's unfortunate it ends this way, or the way it did end back in the first week in And unfortunately, it was a campaign that was mounted by a bunch of lies and a bunch of other mistruths. So I regret having to leave this board, but I thank everyone for their work and karma does come around. With that, I'll...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Solhavy?
I just want to thank you for your, for your service on this commission. You and I have served for more years on this board than I can count because there was that earlier term back in the mid 2000s. And then we came back together again and I very much appreciated your leadership on so many of the issues here. And having been the chairman before, I know that there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes to make sure that when the members come here to have the meeting, that things move smoothly. And the public often does not see that, but it really does happen to make sure that we're a smooth-running board. I know you've had your, the best interests of the town in your heart and I do expect that we will see you again soon. So as I say to you, I wish you the best and you can be very proud of the work that you did for your district. I know you've always kept them very close and be very concerned. A number of the projects we dealt with in your district were, you know, you kept a very close eye on and like me, always keep an eye on what happens in your district because that's the most important thing. We are here, elected by district, to serve. So I thank you very much for your leadership and your service to our town in every, the multi-capacities that you had. I also want to wish Commissioner Phillips all the best as well. It's been a pleasure serving with you, sitting next to you, and I know you've had many years in service in many capacities as well. It was a great celebration we had Monday night to see us recognizing the service of those that, I used to tell Councilman Feen when we sat up here, there's a reason these chairs are red, because you're in the hot seat. And then to welcome the new members of all the different boards and commissions that have put their name forward and come through the election and put their signs up and take their signs down. Why not? You know? And so we look forward to welcoming two new members next year. And, you know, I expect that we're going to have many challenges ahead of us. So to all members returning, departing, Mr. Hibansky, Mrs. DeCilio, and our good friends from the town attorney's office. So, Mrs. Sullivan, thank you so much for everything and I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and looking forward to 2020. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrick?
Just short and sweet, I'd like to echo Mr. Solhavy's sentiments, spoke to you and to Ms. Phillips for all the time and service and obviously those of us will be back next year.
Thank you. With that, I...
I'd like to say thank you to all of you. I've had four years, four wonderful years on the zoning commission, two years as chair, and we accomplished quite a bit during that time. I especially want to thank Mr. Hibansky, who filled some very big shoes and did it admirably and teaching us forward. And Gail, thank you very much for teaching us as the new folks that coming in, into Pat Sullivan, Attorney Sullivan, who has guided us into everybody here. I think it's, for me, a very happy note because it comes after 14 years of serving as a volunteer in public service and I'm very proud of it and very happy. I'm sorry, Mr. Forde, of your disappointment, it does happen, I know what a loss is like, but we move on. And I have found quite a bit of pleasure in my other roles. So I want to thank Mr. Solhavy, Mr. Vacola, and Mr. Hendrick for the time we've spent and I'm looking forward to a new chapter in my life. Thank you very much.
With that?
Come on, you got it. You mean that, you're going to speak?
First of all, thanks, Rich, you got me involved in this. Because of you, right? I got two more years.
It was truly my pleasure.
Yeah, thank you. First you told me it was two-year commitment, then I found out it's four. But no, I think it's, you know, the town's lost, you know, I was telling Mr. Hendrick and Ms. Solhavy, you're one of the hardest working guys in the town.
Thank you.
You know, and I appreciate your guidance. I know my dad is looking down upon you and you've got good things coming and you'll be back, I know that. Ms. Phillips, I want to thank you for serving. It's been a pleasure to serve with you too and I look forward to the next couple of years, I hope. Thanks again.
And I'm going to be short as well. I want to thank our outgoing members for your service and sacrifice for the town, as well as all the regular members who will be continuing and all the alternates, all your sacrifices that you make in your personal lives to be here multiple times a month. The town owes you a debt of gratitude and thank you very much. And Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman and Ms. Paquette will understand this one, but I will say, I move that we stand adjourned, seen ADA.
Well, who's going to explain it to the retina?
She'll know what I meant by that.
Second by, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Next one.
Sure. Please.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.[1504.41]